I'm going to call to order the August 20th meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Belz.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel is delayed. Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
Here. And Roxanne, could you lead us in the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first, I would like to welcome everyone to our council meeting this evening. A reminder that we are now streaming live on Facebook. So if folks tune in to the City of Monmouth page, they can actually watch this in real time and bombard us with questions when we get home, instead of having to wait for a few days. So that's exciting. And then that is up on YouTube, basically immediately, for people to continue to follow along. So exciting things there. And we've been getting some views and some folks watching. I believe, Phyllis, you had some idea of the numbers that we've had the last couple of weeks? Or, I know, right away, the first couple of times.
I don't remember now.
Yeah.
I was like 135 or something like that.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
We are famous. That's exciting. So for those in the room, comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Citizen Comments. If you wish to speak to the council, please fill out a comment card and turn it into the City Recorder. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or councillors may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses the comment. Please note on the comment card if you'd like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenues preferred. And thank you all, in person and on the Internet, for your attendance at this evening's meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And our first order of business is the consent calendar. This week, that consists of the minutes of the council meeting of August 6th and also the minutes from that work session that evening. Those are our two items. And I will entertain a motion for approval unless there were any noted corrections or concerns.
I do have a correction, unless you want to do it.
Right.
I believe in the consent calendar last week, you were one of the ayes. Our mayor Kuntz was.
Oh.
No, she can't vote.
I don't.
She did vote because there were only three of us here. We didn't have a quorum.
To make a quorum of four.
No. No.
The majority of the quorum.
Of the people there.
Yeah. Carry the vote.
Majority of what?
The quorum.
People available, people there.
There's six of us. Four is a quorum.
But...
The quorum was, there were four here, so we had a quorum.
Right.
Yes, and you voted aye.
So three of four had to vote yes, aye, to pass it.
Yeah.
I didn't even get a legal vote, though.
You did vote, though.
But thank you for trying to get me one there. It was pretty exciting there.
Always trying to make you legal.
For a few minutes. I appreciate that. So if there are no other corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Carey and seconded by Counselor Lopez. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Thank you very much. I don't have much for the mayor's report this evening. I have attended a few events and activities and been in communication with some folks about different things, but mostly right now, I'm just working to get little kiddos ready for school in a couple of weeks. I will move to the reports of council representatives, of boards and commissions, and I will actually start with Counselor Belz, if you have a couple for us.
I have neither for you.
Okay.
We did not have a library board meeting, and nor did we have a historic commission meeting.
Okay.
So there you go.
Well, I think August is like that, because the Arts and Culture Commission did not meet, nor did WIMPAG. So I have nothing. Counselor Carey, we know that hard-working planning commission.
Planning, planning's working all the time.
They never give up.
They work all the time. However, however, I've reported on the last meeting that I actually attend, well, actually, I did not attend, because there was a bit of a hearing. But we do have a meeting Thursday next, coming up, and a bit of a design review on 150 East, or Main Street East, which is over here, the apartment buildings that are going to go up over there, and then some other sorts of things that go along with it. And I'll be able to comment on all of those in a very succinct way at our next opportunity.
Okay. Can you, I'm sorry, can you just tell me one more time, when is the?
Uh, next, uh...
Next Wednesday.
No, the Thursday, 22nd.
The 22nd?
Yeah, Thursday next, so coming up.
22nd is tomorrow.
Two days.
Or two days, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this Thursday, then.
Yeah.
Thursday.
All right. And, do we have any community announcements?
Oh, yes. I think before we meet again, there will be the best $6 breakfast in town at the Senior Center on the, the first Saturday would actually be the, not till the 6th, 7th?
I believe it'd be the 7th.
Yeah, 7th.
Okay, so, let's see. We will meet again before then. So I will remind everybody again at the next meeting that the best $6 breakfast in town is at the Senior Center the first Saturday in September.
We will take those reminders as often as we can get them. All right. Hearing none other from us, we will turn it over to City Manager Scott McClure.
Thank you. So first part, we'll go over the quarterly report, which is in your, so this is actually a closing report for the fiscal year 2018-19. And the next time it comes around, you'll see some of these ones continue that are in process and get some new ones mixed in, so. But the first one on there is Determined Approach to City Hall. We obviously have our consultant on board. We've been doing a lot of meetings with staff, fine-tuning the building. We just got the cost estimates refined, and we got a pretty good package. So probably one of your September meetings, I'll be doing a presentation on those findings. And then the UGB expansion path forward. We did the housing inventory work. We looked at, you know, growth barriers, the planning commission. We did the housing needs analysis. And then, now we need to kind of work on the comprehensive plan adjustments. So we look at just some, because there's a lot of things you can do, let alone doing an expansion. There's other options. Not a lot's gone there, because there's so much development activity. That's where our director is spending our time, so we'll get back to that. The stormwater funding, similar. We had our consultant on board. We did an initial presentation to the council, and they're actually pretty close to getting their work done, too, where we're trying to get them into one of our October meetings to do a presentation on that. Then the commercial retail portfolio, that one's done. Transportation plan, council gave a direction to staff, and so we're going to implement that in the next, next budget year, get going there. And then we have just kind of the generalized, you know, citizen engagement and communication, just as we're kind of moving along with those. So those are the main council goal projects. There's obviously all the other ones that the staff's doing. Always pleased to go through and seeing the completes and all the progress and everything's going on. It's a, it's a lot for an organization our size.
Before we have a report, did anyone have any questions or comments about the goal status?
You know, I have, I just, a couple of comments, and, you know, whether we do it, and we probably don't do it now, but one of the things that I'd hope that we would end up with, with the commercial retail portfolio, which we have our list, you know, we have that. But, but at some point, and maybe it's our next year's deal or something, we need to find out what it is we're lacking, and what do we do about it in terms of expanding that sort of thing? It's nice to have a list, but that doesn't, that doesn't tell us anything in terms of how we're going to move forward on, on any of that. So that, that's not, that's a comment, more than anything else. And there is some discussion down below relative to revising a town hall format. I would encourage us to, now that the students will be back in the next foreseeable future, we arrange a fall town hall. There's, I'll have some other things, then I'll comment on that and other later agenda You know, the only other thing, and it's really a minor one in the, well, it's not really a really minor, but it's not a big deal, in the police area, you know, one of the things that's come up is the truck noise. I voiced it. Gene Caligeri has voiced it several times, and, and, you know, there was going to be some discussion about what could be done on that, and, if anything. And maybe there isn't anything, but it would be nice to close that loop. And you've got something.
I have a meeting next Wednesday, August 28th, with the police chief and some other interested parties and some things, and we will be discussing that. That is the topic.
Excellent. Great. So we're, we're on it.
Not drop that.
You just mention it, and it gets done around here. Awesome. Okay, yeah, other than that, it's, and to your point, Scott, there's a lot done here, and, you know, and this is on top of the regular work. So, you know, kudos to the staff all the way through.
I, too, would like to, like to touch on, on that last item that, that Counselor Carey touched on, the citizen engagement and communication. And while we have revised the town hall format, I, it would behoove me to point out that we have not yet had a town hall in this calendar year. And I think that's likely a more, more of a reflection on, on council than, than on you, but since it is, or than on staff. But since it is here, I do recall a discussion that, in which we had talked about trying to, trying to host quarterly town halls. And so I'd like to, like to refresh council's memory on this and hope that in the latter half of the year, we really embrace this communication with the community in other formats, the town hall being one of them.
And thank you to you for setting up that table at Music in the Park, so that, and I think several of the others of you were there, too. So that was a great way of letting people know that councillors have faces and hearts.
Well, it's, it's, you're welcome, and I'm happy to. It's clear that, you know, I mean, staff is, is very heavily tasked, and, you know, as councillors, it's nice to be able to, to fill in where we're able.
Okay. Any other comments about that specific item, then?
And just a couple other ones. Library HVAC, they're getting a couple units in. It's been not pleasant in the library as the units keep going down. What they're finding out is the original, whoever configured the systems did it really interesting, so now it's really difficult to attach the new units and try to get them to work with the old wiring and different things. So they'll get there eventually, but it's, it's been a struggle. A unique one happened over the weekend. We actually had a CrossFit competition in Main Street Park. And so you set up all the stations, and they did all the various things, brought in a bunch of teams and everything. So that was just fun, to get another, a different use out of our park. You have a group there, and I think they said they, they did pretty well. It seemed to flow pretty well for the group and everything, so hopefully they'll do that again. And then a last one, MyNet intergovernmental agreement. It's gone through, I'm not sure it's up to like six different iterations, versions. About a year and a half ago, we thought we had a draft in order. Monmouth actually approved it. Independence didn't. We're bringing it back again, trying to get it cleaned up. Mostly all it is is nothing, very some minor substance, mostly it's just cleanup. The original agreement was very past tense at this point. It talked about all these things we're going to do, which we're doing now. We have different financing options. We need to update different systems. It has no reference to expanding the system, you know, in the original. So we're getting all that cleaned up right now, and hopefully in the near future, we'll get that before the council.
Thank you. And I, I did have a question, we, back in my old days, and we used to get the quarterly financial report in a separate, and so...
Janice is trying to do the next meeting.
So we hoped to have that in September. That's kind of what I thought. Just wanted to verify that, so thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, then we shall move to our citizen comments, and we do have one this evening. So Ryan, if you'd come up and let us know your name and where you live.
Sure, sure. Correctly operate this. Whoa, okay, that's too close. My name's Ryan Narse. I live 733 Sacra Lane. Whether it's sacra or sacri, I think even last time I mentioned that, I still haven't figured that out from the neighbors' bone of some contention. To move on to the, the topic that is the real bone of contention for me right now, you know, Counselor Carey earlier on was talking about, you know, trying to mitigate the truck noise or address that as, as something that people have shown some concern about. And I, of course, am back to talk about the peacock noise, which, though it has abated as of, say, this week, and you can only hear them shrieking intermittently when perhaps something comes too close to them, we still have a growing population of peacocks. They are still within three houses of me. And I, I got to a point of frustration, just for so many months of having to be woken up at night and in the morning, that I, I started looking on the Internet and saying, you know, what kind of things can I do? Because, you know, when I came here the first time, everyone was very empathetic and understanding, but ultimately it came down to, you know, rub some oil on the eggs. You know, a cop came by and said, "You can run them over if you want." And I'm like, you know, turns out that doesn't work, by the way. They're very, it just annoys them. Anyhow, so I got to, I got to a point where I just wanted to figure out if I could be of some service and get maybe the ball rolling on this, because I know the community's kind of divided on this, but I, I don't believe the sides are really equal in this one. There's the side that is, there's an actual nuisance, and then there's a side that we really like looking at peacocks, and I don't think that they have equal weight here. So I ended up contacting Brian Thomas with USDA Wildlife Services in Oregon after hearing about a successful removal of two peacocks in Tigard that were causing havoc, and among other things, eventually pecked at someone's car. He was able with his team to successfully euthanize the creatures and have them out of there. Did it cause some uproar? Of course it did, because there are so many people who are very fond of the creatures, and, you know, people like to take their grandchildren down, and the, the whole thing that we deal with in the community, where there's these balanced interests. But the reality is this, the Portland Zoo will not take creatures like the peacocks because they got rid of their own exhibit because they were so bothersome to other animals, because they're vectors of disease, E. coli, Salmonella among them, West Nile virus, I believe, as well. They bother other animals, defecate everywhere, fly into the trees, go into the neighborhoods. The Audubon Society, similarly, will not take any sort of stewardship of these animals for precisely the same reasons. Every major institution that I've looked to, to see if there could be some sort of humane relocation, has basically said these creatures are invasive, they are exotic pets, and they're not meant to be relocated, they need to be gotten rid of. And I understand that there is a calculus of not wanting to, and I didn't mean to put this in, but it came into my head, ruffle feathers in the community? It really, it just, it popped in there, and I was like, oh, I might as well go with it. You know, I don't mind being the Ebenezer Scrooge here. I'm the person, I would say, probably in the last however many years they've been here, who's probably been the most vociferous or most grumpy about it. I mean, I've called the police, I can't tell you how many times, just to lodge the noise complaint to make it known that it's bad. And sure enough, the police officer comes down, and he goes, "Matt, gee, they really are loud tonight, and we've been dealing with this for years, and I, you know, I wish I could cuff them." And there's a lot of empathy there. But if, if we were to go down the avenue of contacting Brian Thomas and seeing about doing this, I can understand that there would be a lot of hesitance because we don't want people up in arms about the possibility of beloved creatures being euthanized. So my proposal, before my time runs out, and maybe it already has, I'm trying to be quick about this, is that we have some sort of forum wherein we invite those who have perspectives on either side of this issue to come yet again to the city council. And the, the proposal should be this, the city council should offer to anyone who is very pro-peacock and believes that they're just such a great addition to our neighborhood, and it brings people in, whatever their argument is, to offer them on the spot, ownership of the peacocks. On the spot, just say, "If you like them this much, then would you please take ownership of them?" Because currently, they're not protected by, say, animal cruelty laws. All the animal cruelty municipal ordinances that I looked up on the Monmouth website explain that it pertains to a creature that's being owned by someone. If they were to become someone's property, no one could do them any harm. But then, crucially, that person would then be held responsible for the noise and the disruption and the eating of the plants and the defecating everywhere that ensues. And so after that, once we get everyone down here, and of course, predictably, no one agrees to take on the responsibility, they only want the right to the enjoyment of the animals, then we could perhaps move down the road and achieve an actual solution by contacting Brian Thomas. So those are essentially my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
You mentioned you would like someone to contact you, so I'll either have our city manager get ahold of you, or perhaps Counselor Carey.
Talked to him.
Because, because he has talked about that before. Sure.
And see if we can move something.
Sure. The, the hope is that by March, the, the problem isn't still there, because I'm not getting any sleep.
And just so you know, our Rotary Club is planning a Wild Game Feed fundraiser for the spring, so...
Meaning that they're going to feed the peacocks?
No, no, they're, we're gonna, if they taste like pheasant, we can put them on the table.
That's what I'm talking about, right there. That's, that's what I'm, thank you Rotarians, wherever you are. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. That seems to be our citizen comments for tonight. So that moves us right forward to the business agenda. And we do have two items this evening. The first item is actually a conversation we've started near the beginning of this year regarding the Continuum of Care Agreement. This is relating to how our community receives dollars to deal, actually, with homeless situations. And we are, have entered into an agreement with some of our neighboring, with our neighboring county, Marion County, and some of our neighboring jurisdictions to move that forward and form our own organizations. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott to remind us how that works and what we are doing this evening.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so the, deals with homelessness, and that's a growing issue in metro areas. We're getting more here, you know, less than metro areas, but we're, we're getting an issue here, too. That's why we got involved originally. So the, the first level of effort, just to kind of tell you who the players were, we had, we had Cities of Salem, Kaiser, Monmouth, Independence, and then Marion County. Those were the leads on the project. And so we got going and hired a coordinator, and that was housed at the COG. So the COG has been providing management services, essentially, and housing that kind of fiduciary responsibilities. And so they took a look at the whole system and tried to map everything. Where, who does what, who, are logical handoffs between different parties? What does that look like? Did some really nice work there. We had some really good people that worked on that. And then as it evolved, it came down to funding. They said, "Well, what, what happened if we actually had a better funding source?" And so previously, our area, Marion County, was actually its own organization, and then they, they stepped back from that for various reasons. Then we became part of what they call the Balance of State, which is 26 counties around the state, very diffuse, obviously. So big conclusion, when they started honing on that item, is that we need to go back to being our own continuum care organization. And the initial concept was potentially Marion County, Polk County, and Yamhill County. And as it evolved, obviously Marion County's still in, Polk County is now in, they were out for a bit. Yamhill was interesting. The two big cities, McMinnville and Newburgh, wanted in, but the county doesn't, so they are not going to be in the process. So at this point, kind of the players would stick just to Marion and Polk County. And so as an evolution, we'd like to get to that continuum care. You have to apply. It's a federal government program, and that's how it works. So we need to get a group together to make a good application in front of them. So the discussion point with the homeless initiative group, the, kind of the core group, was we need to get some other folks involved, some of the key players that are doing services. We want, want their perspective in as we work toward this. So the key thing is, the next step we're going to is an interim step. It's just to get a group going so you can eventually become a continuum of care. And so players, at this point, we would have the original group already on board. We have a Salem-Kaiser School District that will have Valley Community Action, Union Gospel Mission, and then United Way, and likely coming very soon are the Cities of Silverton, Grand Ron Tribe, and then Polk County coming behind us. So we'd have that beat up. So then that group would be the steady group, almost, or the process. Let's, what do we need to do to get the best documentation in order, get that moving? So what this does is it, is it puts us into a different agreement that sets up the slightly different organization, kind of an evolved organization. And then we have, we already have our funding that we've already been in order for this year, so we'd have a, a second year on top of that to get the project done. And then if everything goes right, hopefully by 2021, we'd have something in order. And a financial impact, we'd been doing 5,000 with a little bit of rounding, we ended up being 6,000, so. So what's before you is a resolution that was actually adopt the memorandum of agreement that would set up this new organization, and that new evolved organization would get, going back on this thing, go to meetings and make some progress. But we would like the council to approve this, if that would be okay.
All right, so yes, this would be a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between Monmouth and the City of Salem, other local governments, and non-governmental nonprofit organizations to form a continuum of care collaborative governance structure for the Midlamet Valley. This would be our resolution number 1890. And I would entertain a motion, and then follow up with discussion if we have it based on the motion.
I'd move approval of resolution 1890 approving a memorandum of agreement to form Continuum of Care Development Council.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution presented before us, and any discussion? Hearing none. I would like to take a vote, and this does not require a roll call.
This doesn't require a roll call.
Okay. So Phyllis, please.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Was that my name?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Belz.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor...
Whoa.
We have a Counselor Whoa? This is hopeless.
Yep.
Okay, who did I miss? I just threw myself off.
Schinkel's not here.
Okay, I passed him off. We're good.
Okay. Okay. Oh, my. So the resolution passes, and we shall move forward in working with those groups to start that application process, which, a year or so, how long do we think that application process is? Once everyone gets on board?
Yeah, it'll probably be, it'll be at least out.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, even toward 18 months, so.
Still away, a year to 18 months away from this, yes. And luckily, we have a representative of the council of governments in the audience, and he's nodding at me as well. So work to be done, but thank you. This, I think, is important work to do for our community, so. Passes. And our second order of business this evening is the second reading of an ordinance adopting legislative amendment 1902. And this was something we have discussed for amendments to our Main Street district zoning. We had a present, a couple of presentations on this, so I'm going to have Suzanne Dufner, our Community Development Director, remind us of the process here, and...
Okay, great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Yes, so we have a second reading for an ordinance to adopt legislative ordinance, or, excuse me, legislative amendment 1902. These would be amendments to the Main Street district and allow that Main Street district area of application to be amended in the future, to allow that to expand. So as you'll recall, we had a public hearing back in July on this. First reading was held just at the last meeting, August 6th. The staff recommendation is to, along with the planning commission recommendation, was to adopt the ordinance. And if the second reading passes, then the ordinance would become effective 30 days after it's adopted, so, yeah. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about.
I believe we all feel like we've had a chance to discuss this. If we choose to adopt this ordinance, which would amend Title 18 of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance relating to our Main Street district, this would be ordinance number 1386. And I will entertain a motion.
So I move to adopt ordinance number 1386, an ordinance adopting legislative amendment 19-02, amendments to Title 18 of the Monmouth Zoning Ordinance related to the Main Street district.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Belts and Councilor Silvernagle, is there any discussion? Hearing done. Miss Bulman, a roll call. Councilor Lopez?
Aye.
Councilor Carey?
Aye.
Councilor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councilor Belts?
Aye.
Councilor Sharmer?
Yes.
Thank you, 1386 passes, thank you for your work on that, Suzanne, so that's great, gives us a lot more flexibility in dealing with businesses in our core area, so we appreciate that. And that takes us to council comments, before we adjourn to our work session. Anything this evening, folks? Yes?
I, I did want to ask, where are we? And obviously, I was not here two weeks ago, so I might have missed something, but where are we in the sidewalk plan, the two of the four? Where do we stand?
I'm hoping to be back at your next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
This is still where we asked for putting dollars to the priorities.
Yeah, yeah, kind of, kind of dialing in a couple of details, talking, and looking at a couple of programs, like, like folks that have the Corvallis approach, or some of the 50/50 sidewalk programs that are out there, just getting a little more details on that.
Thank you.
And, and, and I'm awakened several times a night by coyotes howling outside my bedroom window, so I have some sympathy for these people with the screeching peacocks. Is there, has anybody ever come up with any kind of a solution or a plan for them?
Yes, it, it'd be an easy work session, we, we have a, a long and glorious history of peacock management in Monmouth, so, we could drop it into work session anytime, just to give you the background, and it's a tough issue.
Can we, can we do that? I'd like to, if everybody else agrees.
I, I think it would be good for those of us that are newer on council to, to know what the history is.
It'd be five years, it's a good idea to bring it up.
Yes, I would imagine, yeah.
Outstanding agenda item.
And, and those who live there are going to have a significantly different feeling, passion than those of us that don't have peacocks. We do have coyotes, yes, but I like them howling, so. It makes me realize there's still wildlife there, but it doesn't keep me awake.
The key thing is that Darren imported them all, he started.
It's Darren, it's your fault.
You live on that street, don't you?
I live on that street, I've seen lots of signs on both sides of the street a time or two.
Can we just relocate the coyotes?
To where the peacocks are? They taste like. You are a solutions oriented councillor.
Councilor Carey?
Just a, a comment on the discussion relative to the continuum, continuum of care. I would suggest one of the first agenda items that that group has, once it gets formed, is to send a letter to Dallas, the City of Dallas, and Central School District, 13J, to ask them to consider joining that. Those are two pretty important links that don't seem to be there.
I know there's been conversation with the school district, I'm not sure about Dallas.
Well, just to reach out to them. I mean, just to be inclusive, and they may have reasons not to, you know, I, I don't know, but I think we're, if, if we're going to be Marion and Polk County, then the more, the more inclusive, the more jurisdictions we have involved, the better we are. Just a comment, or just a suggestion.
And Falls City then, as well.
Falls City as well, I'd meant to note those on my earlier notes, yes.
Small but mighty.
All right, thank you. And hearing no others, our work session agenda this evening is to review what might happen if we get a call coming up soon, that our city manager has opted to leave us for the bigger, greener pastures and much more cooperative county government of Clarkmiz County. And we do want to revisit the Monmouth Engaged Committee discussion, that's something that is kind of an ongoing question from our folks who have volunteered for those. And that will be our business at the work session in the back, so we are adjourned to the back.